Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizen input, I take it everyone here as far as the agenda item. Go to new business. Request for special use permit to operate a home occupation at 81 South Sixth Street, located in R2 Residential District. The nature of the home occupation is heating and cooling business. Jason, do you want to take the podium and address the board?
Sure. We have a heating and cooling business, as you know, for about ten years before we had our business over on Wyler Street for about a year and a half. Before that, for about eight years, we had it at our house, and we're just relocating back to our home. That's what we've done. Basically, it's just a home office. I do all my work. Basically, I book people's homes. So I've got a little shop set up out back where I do my sheet metal work in there. I've got another place out in the county where I keep my scrap, so nothing will be coming back to the shop here. The only other change compared to how it was before is I like to put up a sign as you pull in through my driveway. I just want to put up a sign on my little shed there so people know where I'm at, because it's kind of hard to find back on that street back there.
What's the restriction on the two by two?
Um, no.
Ask for it.
I'm sorry?
It's five square feet.
No, R2 is five square feet. What do they next? What's the next door? Go to the next page. R2.
R2, okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you say a sign at your driveway, where do you mean?
Not at the driveway, because where our street is, if you come down Market, you live right there at Sixth Street. Okay, well, it's the alleyway before that. As you pull up that alleyway, I've got a shed there in my driveway, and that's where I wanted to put the sign, so when somebody comes back through that alleyway, they know what house to go to. So it won't be on Market Street. It's actually going to be back on our...
Does that lane have a name?
No.
No, that's a legal road easement.
It's what?
An illegal, like, it's not an illegal, it's an... Sorry, it is a legal road easement.
Okay. But it's not the Sixth Street side?
It's not, no, that's not Sixth Street side, behind it, behind my house.
You're speaking of between you and the other house, or between...
Dawn.
Dawn, yeah.
Donbach and the other?
Richard.
Little Mac.
No, there's one other.
From my property.
Akins. Between your property and the Akins, the roadway that goes between them, correct? Yes, that's an easement.
Mr. Chairman, a question. Why, why do you want to pursue a special use permit and run your business in a residential area as opposed to having a commercial, to be set up in a commercial area?
Well, I said when we first started out, we did it that way. We had the special use permit, we ran it out of our home. We moved it to a different location, and financially, it just, it didn't work out.
Your previous special use permit, the way I read it, maybe I missed something. It was just for an office. Is that correct? It didn't list any shop activities?
That's the way I read it also.
Yeah, so before it was just for an office, but now you're actually going to do some shop work?
Well, it's just a, it's a ten by twenty shed is all it is. Basically, it just has a little break in there and a few materials. The rest of all my material is at a storage shed, so that's where I keep everything.
I can certainly see two sides of this, of the coin, in my mind. Operating a business out of your home, of course, your overhead's lower, right?
Right.
Makes you more competitive.
Right.
But on the other side of that coin are the other people that are in your same business that operate out of commercial buildings and storefronts, and their overhead is higher.
Right.
So...
It depends. I mean, if maybe the business is in the 30s, the building's probably paid for, so I mean, who puts they have employees?
That's really a little bit more, as in general, when I think about whether or not we should consider a business to be operated out of a home. There are certain, all kinds of businesses, right?
Sure.
But in this particular case, I can think of at least one other person that's in your line of business that operates out of their home and shop behind their house. And then we've got a couple storefronts, heating and cooling businesses here in town. So that just, it pulls at me both ways, because I've been on both sides of that fence. I've been where you are right now, wanting to and then running a small business out of my home, because that's the only way I can get my feet on the ground, to be competitive.
Right.
And I've been and had storefront businesses, and I see the other guy who I used to be as someone having an unfair advantage.
I don't think it's unfair. I think it's a matter of choice. I mean, if you want to have a big storefront, you know, and have this big shop, then that's totally their prerogative. But I don't see why, what anybody else does, why it should affect what I do. I mean, if you can look at it, it's unfair, but I don't think...
I'm just looking at the competitive environment.
Yeah, I'm just decreasing my overhead, because when we had that store, we were looking to have more of a storefront, selling things out of the store to pay for it, and it just, it doesn't work that way. I mean, people have their set places where they go get their filters and whatever. It just, it didn't work out. So that's why we decided just to move back home. Basically, really at the house, it's, my wife runs the office. That's really about it. I mean, I've got a little shop back there that I work on my motorcycles and whatever else on. If I need bent something up, I do it in there, but everything else isn't even there. It's a storage shed is where I keep all my material and everything, so, and all my tools and everything, and my van. I mean, ninety percent of what I do is at somebody else's house, you know, or their business or whatever.
I certainly understand what you're saying, and I appreciate that. I guess I'm thinking in broader terms for this, for this board, as when we consider home businesses, what that does to the competitive nature of whatever products or services are being sold or...
Right. See, the problem we had at the office was people would come in and pay their bills every once in a while, but mostly it's by check, either credit card or the phone. We didn't have any traffic. So, I mean, it was a nice place. We had a nice office, a nice shop to work out of, but the overhead, it just, it wasn't worth it. So I said I'd do it out of my house for eight years. Just going to do that again.
And you're comfortable that you'll never have an employee?
I've had employees in the past.
In this special use permit, it states pretty clearly that there will be no other employees.
Right.
So what if you get busy and you have to hire a helper, then you'll be out of compliance with your special use permit?
Gotcha. Well, I don't see that, because I've been...
I mean, I hope you do. I hope you, you know, everything goes great.
Well, I've been down that road. Yeah, when I first started, I had four guys, and, you know, and I had one guy for almost four years. I've been down that road. I've been by myself for, I'd say, probably three years now, and I prefer it that way, honestly. So that's what we, actually, that's what we're doing. We're kind of downsizing is what we're doing.
Fair enough.
It's just, it's not, because before I would travel to St. Louis to my old customers up there, you know, all over the place, and now all my business is right here in St. Jan. You know, we've been doing it for almost ten years now, and I don't have to go anywhere else now. I've got enough business here, but not enough to where I want, where I don't want people working for me. It's just an extra overhead, so I don't think it's going to be an issue.
I got contacted by a couple people in regards to this. Mainly, the first time you came before us, it was a, I guess, a six-month special use permit to allow you to get on your feet, and then you were going to open your storefront and all that, and now you're going back to the other. The concerns that have been brought to me are that, and it's not just with your business, it's with all the special use permits for these home-based businesses, that people that are already established with storefronts, they're paying commercial property taxes and all that stuff. What's to keep them from closing up their business? We're losing out on that commercial property tax. They would like to see these special use permit businesses, when it's a full-time business, running commercial business out of their home, that their property gets assessed a commercial property tax instead of paying their regular home rate. You know, if it's their primary business, their concern was that it shouldn't be run out of the home. Now, if you're, let's, I'm going to use, just as an example, let's say your main job is working at the Lime Kill, and now you come home, you repair lawnmowers or something. That's more of a hobby-based business. It's not your main income. It would fall under, or should fall under, a special use permit for something like that. But their concern was when it's your main bread and butter, it's not a hobby-based business, it's your main business, they should be subject to a commercial tax.
Well, I think that...
That's the few questions are...
Yeah, I think that it, really, I mean, to be honest with you, I think it has nothing to do with the commercial taxes, nothing to do with that. It's all about, they don't want the competition, is what it is. I mean, they, yeah, they've been in business for so many years or whatever. They don't want somebody else coming in and starting up another business because there's too much competition. That's what it boils down to. It's nothing to do with the commercial property tax or whatever. I still pay the insurance. You know, I've got all the rest of the overhead that everybody else has besides the rent on a building.
The property tax is directly come to the city. That's really, I don't care about your insurance, but I'd like for you to pay.
The overhead, you know, what the other companies are talking about, you know, they're saying it's unfair, because I don't have the overhead they do. It's not my fault. It's not my fault that I have a van that's paid for. I don't have five or six vans I'm paying for. You know, it's not my fault that they've got this huge billing they have to pay for every month. That's their prerogative. That's what they want to do, then they can do that. You know, there's a lot of home-based businesses around here, and I don't see the problem with it, really. I mean, I'm not disturbing anybody back there. You know, it's not like I'm out there at midnight banging on metal. What I do, I say, is at other people's houses. We're just running a home office. That's all we're doing. And I just want to put up a little signs when people come and pay their bills and know where to go. That's all it comes down to.
Kelly?
I think we, we as the commission have to be consistent, and bearing in mind that you are in the historic district and about seven and a half feet away from the oldest cemetery west of the Mississippi, that even if the sign is at the, on his shed where he just said he's going to be doing things, I think there's too many inconsistencies. We had a situation with somebody selling cars and a sign in the historic district, and I think we need to enforce the regulations that we're here to enforce in a consistent manner.
Signs do have to be approved by the Landmarks Commission if they live in the district, so it will go before them, before it's put up.
I understand that, but the last time there was a situation like this, it didn't go to Landmarks because it didn't leave this commission.
They were talking at that time about a three by five sign, so that'd be fifteen, that would be three times the size of the sign that you...
Right, but it's still a sign, a commercial sign in the historic district.
My first is going to see it, it's me. I do my property joins his property in the middle of that road up there. I think you thought where it is. You can't see it from the street or anything.
No.
It's just that...
Have you moved out of your business, so now you're walking out of your home?
Yes.
Now?
Mm-hmm.
And how long have you been doing that?
I guess, well, for a month.
November 10.
November 10, this is when we moved out.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your answer.
November 10, that's when we moved out, and that's when we applied for special use. Now, before, when I got my special use permit, it wasn't a temporary six-month to move into a building, like you were saying. What it was, is I was renting my house at the time, and the guy who owned it didn't want me running a business out of it. And that's why they gave me six months to get the house straightened out, rented in my name, and that's what we did. So it had nothing to do with moving into another facility.
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, I think you might have mentioned that that was your future hopes or something. I just remember it being mentioned. That was it.
Yeah, that's been nine years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I said I want to keep doing business, you know. I like to stay right here and say, I said, yeah, we've got plenty of customers, which is plenty busy, and I want to stay right here in St. Jan.
Is there any sales tax collected for the city as far as they step themselves?
No.
Probably always one in the background.
Service business don't have to do that.
Well, if you sell somebody a water heater, you got to pay sales tax on the water heater, just not on the service and installation.
You say it on where you buy it at.
Right.
So that money doesn't come to St. anything?
It comes to St. Jan, because I buy it here.
You buy it here?
I buy most of my material. The only thing that really comes out of town is my equipment, like my air conditioners and furnaces. Other than that, you know, like my sheet metal, other than that, all my parts, I go to A&amp;K, I go to town to do it. I shop right here in town. And I pay more for it, but it keeps some money right here.
Treats as far as large items, they come from out of town?
My furnaces and air conditioners, yeah. Do American Standard equipment.
Do you have any feedback for neighbors? Mr. Ed, do you want to address the board with anything?
Oh, being honest with you, does that go affect our property taxes any or anything like that?
Did it before?
Mine?
Has it before?
No, uh-uh. No, I, but changing him from business to a business, is that going to make our property taxes go up?
It shouldn't. He's not getting, he's not getting rezoned. He's getting a special use permit for a length of time.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I thought it was rezoning.
No. Well, who would determine as far as a commercial property?
Assessors office.
John?
Because I know there have been some daycares in the community that partially commercial property, they're paying partial commercial on their, like a portion of their building, you know. And that's like, it's quite a bit more than residential.
It is.
Not a tremendous amount, but it is more.
And so there's a precedent for that then also?
Yeah, it's not our call. I think it has to go through the assessment.
Brenda, have you heard from any of the property owners? None?
When you're right next door.
Yeah.
Yeah, his property, he's got that field right next to me.
We're a ring roll, you see there.
Oh, okay.
Properties, they actually, if he's ordering, it's his.
Right.
So as far as the property, nothing's going to change. I mean, my wife runs the office out of the house. That's really the biggest change, other than that.
Any other questions, comments? Maybe, did you want to say something earlier?
He answered it. I was just commenting that it would be pointless for us to continue having a shop, because we don't sell anything out, but we don't do retail.
Right, we tried retail.
I just sat there by myself all day.
Yeah, it was, it was nice to have an office and have a shop, but it wasn't paying for itself, so we tried it for almost two years.
You know, this, to maintain some, to maintain consistency in this board, other home-based businesses have been approved for special use permits. No impact on traffic, no negative neighbor comments or neighbor concerns. The chief of, the fire chief is happy. He doesn't see any potential problems. I'm, I'm just, I'm just really concerned with continuing to allow home-based businesses in residential areas. But at the same time, I think this is what we've done, or what this board, this board has done in the past, and I don't see any reason for consistency's sake to, to be against this. The sign is an issue. Being in this historic district is an issue to me. And I don't know how we, I don't know how we address that moving forward, but at this time, I would like to make a motion if there's no further discussion.
I just had a real quick question. I don't see anything from the police chief, I see the fire chief.
No, I mean, please, we're simply, you guys not comment.
I mean, he approved it last time. I wouldn't see whether there'd be any change. I just don't want to be adding anything.
I like to advise the board that there are stipulations on which you need to make your decision based on. That is spelled out under the special use regulations, and this is what you should consider basing, basing your decision only upon this. If you have issues with home-based businesses in residential areas, which they're only allowed in residential areas...
What page are you pointing that from, please?
Page one. That is something that you need to take the Board of Aldermen to amend the ordinance.
And based on those guidelines, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Can we do this, like, generally first, on the conditions of use, or the sign, and then the no fire, scrap metal, or other product, or anything? That's all in there, right? It's on, I think this is probably... Do they need to do this separately? Is it already covered?
I'm sorry, so that's...
I think it's already covered there.
Page four.
I'll have numbers.
Under the criteria?
Yeah, condition of use.
Right. Oh, okay.
Amen.
Is this automatically subject to review after years?
No, you have to specify if you want this automatic. Automatic is in industrial zones.
Oh. So that's all part of it, right, Tom?
Yeah, as far as I can tell.
Yes.
Yeah, that's all covered in there. You can't have any, you won't be storing any scrap metal outside, things like that. Right, right. So we did it for, you know, for over eight years before, and we didn't have any, any issues at all with our neighbors.
He's always got it, spread and clean.
So I've got another area out in the county where I keep all my scrap. Got another place where I keep all my materials and my supplies.
We have a copy of your previous, your previous special use permit, and it's only for an office.
Okay.
So it's different this time. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Tom, do you want to put a review on that? What's the proper way to do that, to amend the motion?
It has not been set, so you can...
Yes, I would like to, what's a reasonable timeframe on something like this? Two years? Is that a standard, Brenda?
You can put anything you want on it.
What normally do you see?
Yearly. I've seen one over three years. I've seen one over every year. It just depends on the situation.
I guess I'm okay with either one or two-year renewal. I think Landmarks will take issue with their signage, and I trust them to keep their...
Well, their sign's all the way down Market Street. I mean, I don't see what the issue is with the sign. You can't, you won't even be able to see it from, from the street.
Still in historic district.
It shouldn't be an issue, but it still has to go with the order.
And you never had one before.
Right.
So that's, that's a difference.
So I'd like to make the motion of approval with a two-year renewal. Have a motion?
I'll second.
Second, do a little call, please.
Uh, no.
Kathy Walts?
No, basing my no on item number six of the special use regulations.
The concrete supply?
Yeah.
Tony Grass?
Yes. That was the same for me, the reason, number two and six, actually.
What's number two and six?
Number two is adversely affect the character of the neighborhood. Number six is to be in conflict with the comprehensive city plan.
Are you aware of the housing conflict?
That was my next question.
Because of proximity to the cemetery in, in the historic district.
But the cemetery is in my front yard, ten feet away. My office is inside my house by the kitchen. People drive up, they come over, they hand us a check, and they leave. And that's very rare, because usually they send it right in the mail.
I understand what you're saying, but my vote is no.
Yes.
Tom Couch?
Yes.
Very well.
Yes.
But Jokust?
Yes.
Can't talk tonight. So that is six eyes, two nays. Six yeses, two noes. You pass it.
Go to the Board of Aldermen.
Um...
January?
January. January ninth.
January ninth.
Sounds good. All right, thank you.
We have the old business. Yes, we have that. No, we got other business. You got other business? Yeah. Is there a list of special use permits?
Is there a list? There's a file cabinet.
But I mean, there's a, is there like a master list that...
There wasn't a file cabinet before I got here.
Well, I mean, like, since you've been here.
How do we know when someone's special use permit?
When somebody's, yeah, reviews.
Is that for review?
Yeah.
Well, I have no idea.
So nothing ever gets reviewed?
There's only two that I'm aware of that were ongoing, that had to be reviewed, and that was...
Well, I think a lot of them get the stipulation of a year review.
Or every six months, some of them.
I have been finding special use permit files downstairs in subdivision folders and...
Well, I think this even been recently, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought in the last three or four years, we've seemed to have done several...
Six months or...
Six months or years.
George Wiener. George Wiener, we were supposed to bring review in six months, I thought.
George's was denied, well, it wasn't denied, it was approved with stipulations by the Board of Aldermen, and he refused to sign it. And so he does not have a special use permit.
No.
And then a couple of the other...
The other one that I'm aware of is the gun shop. Not the gun shop, but the gun cells in Hope subdivision. Um, the other one that I'm aware of is the gun shop, not the gun shop, but the gun sales in Hope subdivision.
Or Rose Healy's Flower Shop, didn't that have a review?
I'm not sure if that had a review or not.
I think there were several.
A couple of them we've talked about, like the wedding shop at the Jehovah's Witness Hall, that never materialized.
Right.
The nail salon over at the old Pollard property, that never materialized. I mean, there's a bunch of them we approved, but they just never got off the ground.
And the, um, the gun dealer, um, actually didn't begin till almost a year later. It was several months before...
Was that at Hope?
Yes. Before he got his, all of his paperwork and everything from the state and got up and going. I will check on Lucy's though.
So unless there's a stipulation like Tom did tonight with two-year, then it's in perpetuity, right?
That's correct.
Well, even like the one we did last month, that had a year in it, huh?
Yeah, there was, there was a time on it, I don't remember what was, but it was...
Did we have a, a lady with the art thing on Four Street, I think, that had a year, didn't it?
Which one?
The lady across from Valley with the...
Multi-yards thing.
Suzanne Thompson?
Yes.
That should be...
This is just a...
Should be just about a year ago, I believe, it was last December she came.
I mean, I could've went either way, but, you know, based off the phone calls I got, I, I mean...
Well, I, I...
Well, I got phone calls too, but he never called about any other home.
Right.
Yeah.
No other home business until it was a competition of his.
Absolutely, competitive nature is there, and...
And I'm not totally far home businesses either, but this guy had it for eight years.
I, I didn't see anything that stood out.
Make your motion to adjourn.
Any more, any more old business? New business? I got a motion for adjournment?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
There's two, sir, I was over there today, there's not just one receipt, this is a carbon copy of his first request, he just let his wife sit at the kitchen table.